Eric is going to present some information on that?
Thank you very much. I only made a single copy of this because I provided a link to everyone in the email I sent out last week. But I'd like this to be able to be entered if we're going to be voting on the resolution next week. I'd like this to be entered as part of our D and D practice. We have, I guess, the Department of Natural Resources report on wake boats. Nobody has an objection. I'd like to...
It should be all right.
It should be all right. Here's another one too, but I think that was...
You're not going to read that whole report, right?
No, no, that's why, that's why I'm...
Okay, because we all had a chance to read it.
Yeah, that's why I did. And I would like to read the resolution so far. If we want any adjustments made to that or anything, any suggestion between now and next week or next two weeks.
We haven't gone through the procedure to decide whether we're going to have a resolution or not yet.
Right, that's why I want to read it.
But we haven't gone to that point yet. We have to go past step one first.
Well, it's part of the presentation that I wanted to...
If you tell us what this is about, the legislations and stuff?
Yes, basically it is support. The resolution will be in support of the current legislation that is being proposed in Lansing. House Bill 6652. And it mandates shoreline offsets of wake boat operations in Michigan to 500 feet from the shoreline and a minimum of 20-foot depth. And what that will do for our lakes, and I think is especially critical on Houghton Lake, is wake boats will no longer be allowed on Houghton Lake because the depth is not deep enough. And wake boats just tear our shoreline up. And it's all outlined in the proposal resolution that I sent out. And that's basically what it's about. I urge the support of all of my members on this to follow through in support of this and to let, it'll also notify our state representatives and senators and so forth that we support this resolution for all three of our lakes in Roscommon.
Apparently the DNR had made rules on this previous to this, is that correct?
The DNR made recommendations. There were previous, the wake boat manufacturers have their recommendations. And of course, those are quite a bit less. In other words, they only wanted 200 feet offshore and 10 foot of water. But wake boats create a lot more damage than that, a lot of damage when they're that close to the lake. The DNR had made recommendations that they be out that far. When I was down at the wake boat symposium in Lansing last early December, that was discussed and everybody was talking about, well, we need, and I urged them to come up with some legislation because that's the only way it was going to be proposed. Now, I had no idea they were going to do it. Somebody else did it. I wasn't behind the legislation. But that was something that I proposed at that time. And perhaps it was probably already been in the works. I'm sure it was. So the...
So we had nothing to enforce this before?
There was nothing, they could operate it in five foot of water for all we knew. There was no statute prohibiting that. Now, the other issue we're going to have to deal with if this legislation is passed is enforcement. So, but at least the law will be there and we can deal with enforcement later. If we don't have the law to begin with, there's never going to be any enforcement on anything. So that's, that's why this is, that's why I think this is so important that we get behind this bill and get it pushed through in Lansing.
Well, I noticed in that report reviewing that, the DNR is recommending 15 foot, not 20 foot.
Couple of different, there's a couple of different spots where the DNR recommends different, different things. There's also, the DNR also says up to 33 foot, 15 to 33 foot minimum. So I think they, what they did is they settled on a happy medium and they said 20 foot.
Well, the conclusion on that report says 15 foot. In the conclusion of the reports, both of us, I looked at them both. They did say 500 foot, which came as a common sense thing. You're going to be that far out to get that depth anyway.
Yeah, exactly. At least on our, it depends on the lake, of course. Every lake has its own peculiarities and uniqueness.
One of my concerns would be people, you know, I understand the damage it can cause. We understand that. One of my concerns would be there's people that already own these products. And they don't believe we could legislate them out of using them now that they've purchased them.
Well, they aren't. This legislation just gives the requirements for where it has. There's a lot of places on, we'll say Higgins Lake, for example, because that's the only lake that this is really going to, you know, have to be monitored because Houghton and Lake St. Eleanor, they're just not going to be allowed there. But on Higgins Lake, there's a lot of places that are deeper than 20 foot and it's a pretty big lake. So this, this activity should be done offshore quite a ways to dissipate the wave action. I believe in the resolution that I sent out and some of the reports, these wake boats cause up to 5,000 times as much wave, 5,000% more wave action on the shoreline. I can't remember exactly what the numbers are, but it's astronomically higher than regular boats. And there's a lot of, we get enough wave action with regular boats, I think. And you've been doing your research, Rex. I can appreciate that. Thanks.
I'm only one board member, but my opinion is, you know, I understand the concerns of them fully.
Are you in favor of this resolution or not, Rex?
I'm not in favor of a resolution. I think if you want to send a letter out supporting this bill and any board member that wants to be signed on that letter also with their permission, that would be permissible. I don't think it's an issue for a resolution to be, come forward. That's my opinion. Mark?
I'm not in favor of a resolution at this point. I appreciate the work that you've done. Enforcement concerns are a big deal. The buy-in from the public. I'd want to talk to Phil Spicer. I'd want to talk to Kim Morley. I'd want to talk to the folks that have some of these, some concerns along the lake. They want to find out what they have to say. I'm not saying you shouldn't press forward with the resolution, but I want, I want more information before I put my name, affix my name to a resolution.
The two links that I provided in my emails to you, if you read through the DNR report, which is what I just handed in, and the 2023 report also is, I believe, is there from the Michigan Waterfront Alliance. They referred to that report also. I'm disappointed that you wouldn't support a resolution. I can understand the letter, but a resolution is much stronger and coming from three of the major lakes in Michigan, I think would have much more of an impact on our legislature.
Didn't say I was going to support. I just need more information. I need more...
Right, right. So I mean, I pass that information on. You just have to do a little research on it, I guess.
I need more information from the public too. Like I mentioned, Phil Spicer, I need, I need his input on how is it going to affect his business? Kim Morley, is it going to affect the people that actually already have wake boats? I just need more information.
Well, we're not banning wake boats. Keep that in mind. It's not banning, they just have to be offshore.
Generally what happens is we make the resolution to support a bill. We don't usually support a resol, we don't normally support a resolution or a bill with a resolution. We're kind of doing this backwards.
David?
We haven't done that before?
We may have, but not that I can remember at any time. We usually support resolutions if a bill passed. We're kind of doing it backwards. This bill is going to go through whether, and also I need to talk to Sheriff's Department. Those sheriffs, if this thing passes, is there going to be enforcement policy? If there's no enforcement policy, then we just have a bill that doesn't have any meaning.
There's no enforcement policy right now on noise, okay? And speed right now because we don't have any patrols on the lake.
Still want to talk to the sheriff. Need the sheriff's input.
My whole problem is what this is. I'd like to go with the DNR to see if they're trying to make this change. Are they going to watch the lakes? Are they going to patrol the lakes? That's my whole thing.
Well, like I said, passing a law and enforcement are two different things.
Right.
Two different things entirely. There are a lot of, we have a lot of laws on the books that aren't for us.
But they've taken money away from us for patrolling the lakes and now they're coming out with more stuff. That's what they're not...
How did the DNR take money away from us?
We used to get funding to patrol the lakes.
From the DNR?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then they're going to have to come up with something. But we got to get the law passed first before they can, before they can do it. I mean, we can't not do something because we're afraid of not doing something in the future. This is an incremental process. You have to get the law passed, then you have to do enforcement. And then that's another issue entirely.
And I'm just not ready to support anything until I get more information.
Okay, how would you, how would you like that information?
Bring, you bring some of the more major players into the meeting. You bring the Sheriff's Department into the meeting and we have discussion and have it vetted out. I'm not ready to move on to this until, until that's done.
We have the DNR support already.
I need, I need local law enforcement. I need buy-ins from the, from the major folks that own some of these businesses.
Okay, I can do that.
I'd like to comment that I had a talk with an owner of a wake boat on Higgins Lake. And he says, you got to be that far out from shore anyway to operate them because of the depth issue.
Well, you're talking to one of the responsible people, okay?
Well, yeah.
There's a lot of irresponsible people and that's when it'll get into enforcement. If you're talking to a responsible person, they're already offshore quite a ways. They don't have an issue with that. And the boat manufacturers even said that in the symposium that I went to. The people have to be responsible. How many people are responsible? How many people use our wash right now? How many people do what they should do on the lake to prevent invasive species? And these things are terrible for invasive species. Their ballast fill up every time they go out on the lake and what goes into them? The invasion species and where did this boat come from to dump invasive species? In other words, they have to drain their tanks when they get out, when they go off the lake. But there's still a lot of stuff in their ballast.
You don't need to convince me they're bad for the environment.
Okay.
I mean, plain and simple. But I think the best way to handle it is a letter of support of that bill from individuals.
And I agree with Rex. At this juncture, that's how I feel.
Okay, well then, what I'll, so what you're asking from me or from us is you want to talk, who do you, who do you want to come in here and testify about this or find out more about it?
In your resolution, there was two different bill numbers.
There was a typo then.
I figured it was. I'm just pointing it out.
6652, 5532, okay. Okay, I have a typo. That's no doubt. That's why, I mean, this is just a proposed...
Yeah, I understand.
Thing anyway, and I wanted more input from you as commissioners.
I just think it needs to be vetted better as well. I'm not saying I'm not going to support it, but I need it vetted.
So do you want to talk to the Sheriff's Department?
Sheriff's Department, DNR, Phil Spicer, Kim Morley, any other...
I'm not going to get the DNR here. The DNR is always, they're the ones that back this bill.
That's just my suggestion.
Right, right.
Just go bring them in, that's fine.
So you're talking about the sheriffs?
Sheriffs and also some business owners. I just mentioned those two business owners because I happen to know them personally. Probably others that...
Do we know when this bill is going to go on the floor?
Uh, no. I think it's just proposed. Do you, do you know, Charlie? I don't know either. But I mean... I can, I can appreciate business owners, okay? But we've got a big, big problem, same issue going on with something that you and I have talked about before.
ATVs.
And that's ATVs, okay? Just because they're there doesn't mean they're good for the environment and good for our lake or good for our woods. So that's something that we really need to, really need to think about just because, just because...
That's what I said. I don't, I don't disagree that they're bad for the environment. We were going to handle this situation.
Yeah, the business owners, okay, that sell these boats, what are they going to tell you? They've got invested interest in selling the boats. They're going to tell you they want the boats on the lakes. And again, we're not taking them off the lakes. Well, what we're doing is we're saying you have to operate safely. And like I said, the enforcement issue, that's down the pike.
That's where I said, I always want to handle, I want to handle the end before I...
Well, then, then we, then what we should do is repeal the noise ordinances and we should repeal the speed ordinances then because they're not enforced now either.
Just focus on this, this piece of legislation that you put forward.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to item two then? Okay, Eric? Can we move on?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I guess we're going to let Jody Valentino and Chase talk on a soil erosion ordinance. We would like to move forward with.
So Chase Shapki, who serves as our Soil Erosion Officer as an employee of our County. I think they have those.
We already...
It works with this one.
Two of hers copies.
So he's been in position for about a year now doing the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control as our official officer for Roscommon County. Through the years that I have been here, the idea of creating an ordinance for soil erosion and sediment control has been kicked around. But Chase is the first person to actually put pen to paper and start working with Eagle through, through actually developing this. There are very few things that the State of Michigan statutes provide that counties can do ordinances for. This is one of those. It gives teeth when people fail to pull permits or do not properly maintain. One of the biggest things that I would say is when you're considering soil erosion sediment control, you're going right back to that health and safety of the lake again. That this is all within that certain category. So this is, this is the first draft and I will let Chase explain exactly how it works for the ordinance standpoint, how he, why and how.
So it's not much different than our current resolution. It's been approved by Eagle and it's gone to the Soil Conservation. They didn't say anything yay or nay on it, but it was sat there with them for 45 days, which is what's required to do. But this is Eagles put their stamp of approval on it. It's really no different than what we're doing now and nothing's changing except for the fact that now we have a little more teeth. The one thing it does allow is for the charge, currently we charge for commercial site visits. Every time you show up to a commercial site, we charge a fee. Now, because you have some of these larger houses being built on the lake that require multiple site visits, it allows for site visits for non-commercial projects being charged for site visits for non-commercial projects as well. That's really the only difference besides what we currently have.
So we currently have sent specifically for the enforceability portion of it to make sure that it's collectible in court. We have sent this on to the county council, which I expect an answer back any time now in regards to that. The rest of the meat and potatoes of that, of the ordinance, actually the approval from Eagle and Soil is where it's important. So the way that this process works for you as the Board of Commissioners, once you make the determination that you want to move forward today, if you make that determination, then we will go ahead and schedule a public hearing for you to hear comments and concerns. Hopefully it's your next meeting would be appropriate. And then we would publish that in its entirety in the paper prior to... After that point, you would then approve that in seven days?
I think it's four days.
Four days after date of approval, basically.
Seven.
Seven days, okay. It would take effect, basically. And then we file it with the clerk's office. So that's on record for there. Because Eagle has already gave an approval for this, the 90-day period that they traditionally have to do that is smooth at this point.
I'm in favor of this and mostly for the site visits. They started a house a year ago on East Home Lake Drive. That's like halfway finished, you know, 7,000 square feet.
Yeah, yeah, that's one of them, yeah.
That's some of the problems I run into.
Yeah.
It takes two years to build a house anymore.
And it's not like they took the wire off. They worked all through the winter on this place.
And then also the other problem I always ran into is bringing them into compliance was always difficult. This would make that process much simpler.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Eric? Eric?
I am too.
I guess we have a general consensus to move forward.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, we're going to adjourn until 10 o'clock for the regular meeting. Thank you. David, one last question.
Sure.
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Do a roll call first.
Okay, let's do a roll call first. I can see who's here.
Ostergren.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Milburn.
Here.
Sunser.
Is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I believe you wanted to bring something up under old business?
I'm sorry?
Did you want to bring something up under old business?
Oh, yes, I did. I thought, I was just going to bring it up. Okay, yeah. What I want to talk about in old business is some recent discussions that I've had with the folks from Central Power on the solar energy project. Pretty excited about some of the things I want to report in your old business.
We'll put that under unfinished business, number eight now?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Anybody else? Okay, we're looking for an approval of the consent agenda. Does anybody need anything pulled out of the consent agenda to look at?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eric? Aye. Now we're going to do number five, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved as presented.
Is there anything anybody wants to pull out of that? We'll call a vote, please.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Number six, public comment? Any public comment? We have one on Zoom.
We have a Mr. Greg Cemac.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Greg Cemac and I'm a resident of Garrish Township. Thanks for the opportunity for allowing me to speak to your board. I brought before this body at your last work session a request to renew a county resolution that was originally passed by this board in 2018 and had expired. The association I represent, Higgins Lake Swimmersich Organization, has been working to control cases of swimmer zitch on Higgins Lake since 2015. This resolution would allow us to apply for renewal of our permit to control the Canada goose population on Higgins Lake as we've been doing for the last five years. It was pointed out by Commissioner Wolfson that there was a parenthetic reference to having a resolution by a municipal authority in the DNR requirements that named townships or cities as examples of such an authority. And although the response I received came too late to be included in the packet materials, I did receive a confirmation from Casey Reitz, who's the DNR person responsible for permitting, that this reference was an example and that the county resolution was an acceptable authorization for renewal of our permit. There were some concerns brought forward by Commissioner Wolfson and concurred upon by Commissioner Milburn that they would like assurances from the township surrounding the lake that they were supportive of such a resolution. And I said I would contact both township supervisors and get them to comment. I received letters of support from both Larry Madury, Supervisor of Lyon Township, and Dave Udi, the Supervisor of Garrish Township, to that effect, and submitted them to Commissioner Ostergren, who had them added to the material I'll receive for today's meeting. So I believe now all the concerns have been addressed and I hope that this resolution will be passed at today's meeting. And although I know it's not common practice to have conversation with people making public comment, if anyone has any questions, I would be happy to address them.
Thank you, Greg.
Hey, thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Any other public comments? Do we have any visitors? Need to be recognized. Item number eight, unfinished business. Eric, you want to talk about the soil or...
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Cherry. I am going to pass out a copy of my comments so they're on the record. I had a meeting this last week with Elise Mazz, M-A-T-Z. I'm not sure exactly how to pronounce that, but she is the Vice President of, for Solar Energy for Circle Power Renewables. And if, Andy, if you could put up the link to the Grove Land Minesolar.com link, I appreciate it. This is a project that's being done up on Dickinson County right now and I'm really excited about it. And we'll scroll down there in a little bit, but let me just go through a few of the notes. These are just notes that I took at the meeting. They're, they're still working with the DNR on property acquisition. The property they want to develop is in Higgins Township in my district and on some state land that the DNR would have to approve these particular things. And this takes a while. They're working on the option agreement with the DNR, but things are very positive so far as we discussed about a year ago. There's lots of studies that has, have to be done. So this is a long-term project, five or six, environmental impact, wetlands, geotechnical studies. Boring's need to be done to see if they will support the solar collectors. Everything is still preliminary, but there aren't any major roadblocks so far and the DNR is being cooperative, which is unusual on most projects. This project is not the only project and we are, and we are not competing with other areas. They have them going on all over. If they could put these projects everywhere, they would. But if we, if we meet, if we meet that, it'll be very, very positive. And they will build in all the areas, as I mentioned. These projects are funded by private venture capitalists, which I think is very important. This isn't a project that's being done by the government. They need to find out, I made some notes there, they need to find out what the industrial property tax were. And I did, I got that information and passed it on to Elise last night. And a project of this size could bring a lot of revenue in for Higgins Township and a lot of revenue to the county. And I'm talking pretty substantial. And up in, if the project was between 150 and 200 million, if you scroll down there a little bit for me, I'd appreciate it, Andy. They're looking over the lifetime of the project up in Grove Land, which should probably be about the same size. $12 million over 10 years guaranteed local property tax benefit. That's a lot of money, gentlemen, a lot. And it would really, really help, help the county out. Circle Power can also guarantee, okay, the amount of taxes they're going because things change over time and they'll, and they will actually give us a guarantee. In fact, I was talking to, communicating, I should say, with Elise last night about this. And I mentioned that she wanted me to pass on the millage rates, which I did, for Higgins Township and the state. Pretty small print here. I'm going to have this, the state education fund in Roscommon County. I passed those on her and I said, you know, as time gets closer to, you know, getting this project off and rolling, we would be willing to sit down and talk about possibly, you know, getting some tax breaks. And she said, we're not interested. They want to make sure that the county makes money on this. So they don't, they don't want any special tax breaks for starting this project off, which I thought was a great concession. So we didn't have to go that far. You always have to throw that stuff out in a timely manner, not, not right off the bat. So this is kind of nice. What's important to... What's important to stress again is that this project is not a single project that we're competing with other counties with, and it'll tie directly into the power grid that runs right by the proposed land, which is right by the airport. And the land is, well, state land, first of all, which is kind of nice. And these projects, these solar energy projects, as opposed to these big windmill projects, which are very unsightly, are lower to the ground and practically invisible from most people. So you're not gonna see them unless you're out there in front of the project. The windmills that are way up in the air really, I think, are a real nuisance. I think every time I drive through Bridgeport, it's kind of crazy. It's all you see is windmills, very, very ugly. There's gonna be obstacles to overcome. Some, some of the folks in the Ross Common won't like a big solar energy farm here, and that's, I think, one of the reasons that they want to guarantee the property tax revenue that we're gonna have coming in. Some like to hunt there, drive their off-road vehicles, Rex. And, but it's pretty desolate. And it would mean a lot of jobs, temporary, initially getting it all set up, and probably, I think, she mentioned 10 to 15 permanent jobs. So that's kind of, that'd be kind of nice to have some, some permanent jobs out of it also. But the initial build of the project, you're looking at a 200, you know, 150, 200 million. She didn't know, she couldn't give me an exact figure because they don't know how much land they're gonna be able to acquire or put this, this on. So it could be a pretty substantial number. Andy, if you, if you could put up the spreadsheet. And I don't quite understand all of the numbers that were passed on to me. Who passed? Jamie. Jamie Hauserman passed these on to me. And you can't really see them that well, but I'll, but I'll, but I'll tell you. Our millage rate for the county right now is 3.5194. And then you have the state education fund, which is at 6.0. And then Higgins Township is at 1.4276. A project of this size in Higgins Township is gonna more than double the revenue to that township, tax revenue. That's pretty heavy duty.
How, how do you figure that? If they lease this land from the DNR, there probably is gonna be no taxes on it.
No, 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 it's, it's industrial, personal property. So the, the cost of the project is what you charge property taxes on. And you're looking, and I believe this is the correct, I don't understa, Jody, maybe you can help me out on this, because I'm still confused on what she said. Even though I used to be an assessor, I don't understand her spreadsheet exactly. What, what would be the number that you saw on the spreadsheet for increased revenue to the county?
So Andy, if you go all the way over, the other way, yeah, that way. So if you look at the figures right there under the blue, you'll actually see those numbers up there, which I need new glasses, so I can't. Yeah, that top number.
Eight hundred and seventeen thousand a year.
Yeah, off of that personal, industrial, personal property.
And, and then the 600,000, okay, is, goes to the state, but we recoup a percentage of that back because that's for the educational fund. So what, Jody, you, we were talking last night, I don't know if I, I gave you short notice on this, so I'm sorry.
I didn't get to get with Rebecca, she was gone already. But essentially, I mean, you get basically 5% based on X amount per population for your students that come back in. But that, the more industrial we have, more money we get back into our schools, obviously.
So of the 600,000, would we get back 80%, 70%?
We, just the schools themselves only see about 5% increase in there, but that's still a huge dollar amount for our school districts.
Right.
Yeah.
Of the 600,000, though, how much of that?
About 5% of that.
Only 5%?
Yeah, but you're gonna spread that out, the state likes to hold on to education money.
Okay, okay.
They like to parcel it out to other things.
Okay, okay.
But it's still a, it's still a.
And if you'll scroll down, Andy, down to where I highlighted Higgins Township. Right, it's not highlighted very well, but it's 142,000. And that's for a $200,000 one. We also did a scenario on a $150 million project also. But anyway, this is, this is a long-term, a long-term project, and it's gonna take a while. But, you know, you have, how do you start a 100-mile journey? You take the first step. And so that's, that's what we're doing here, and it's been a year already, but they're looking at getting these projects going all over the state, and I'm pretty excited about it. And I, and I hope you guys are too, because, I mean, we got a revenue problem, and we've got an expense problem. This is part of, this will help our, our revenue issue. Anybody have any questions for me?
Eric?
Obviously, soldiers. Our county can become a ticket.
Yeah, he would, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for all the work, Eric.
Thanks.
Anything under new business? Not that I know of. Committee reports. Okay, number 10, motions, resolutions. We have a motion with a, common term is goose resolution for Higgins Lake Swimmers' Itch. Do you want to read that?
I would love to. Move to adopt resolution number 2024-03-01, authorizing the Swimmers' Itch organizations permit for roundup, capture, and hold of Canada geese on Higgins Lake. Resolution number 2024-03-01. Resolution to authorize the Higgins Lake Swimmers' Itch organizations permit for roundup, capture, and hold of Canada geese on Higgins Lake. Regarding Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Canada Goose Nest Destruction Program and/or Canada Goose Roundup Removal Program. Whereas the County of Ross Common has received complaints of overpopulation of Canada geese inhabiting the grounds of various locations within the county. And whereas the County Commission has determined that the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Canada Goose Nest Destruction Program and/or Roundup Removal Program are effective programs for the control of site-specific problems for our residents. And whereas the residents clearly understand that any geese removed and relocated during this program are at risk for death and/or illness. And whereas the residents, lake associations, businesses, subdivisions, condo associations, et cetera, must apply for a Michigan Department of Natural Resources permit for these programs on an annual basis and must ensure that all lakefront residents, tenants, employees of this site have been informed that this program is taking place at their lake site. And understand if their site is located within more than one government unit, they are responsible for receiving letters of support from each township, city, village, and are responsible for adhering to the requirement under their permit. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Ross Common County hereby nor formally requests the assistance of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources on behalf of the requests made in Ross Common County by any lake associations, so long as they abide by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources permit requirements in the implementation of the Canada Goose Nest Destruction Program and/or Roundup Removal Program for a five-year period from 2024 through 2029. And additionally, to advise the department that there shall be no cost to the County of Ross Common County for these programs.
Thank you.
Any motion?
Yes, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second? Two seconds, any discussion?
Yes, I really appreciate the support on this resolution from everybody here on the board. I hope everybody votes yes on it. I think the nice thing about this is it isn't gonna cost the county one penny. It's all done by private citizens, something that I think should be done in a lot of areas in our government. So I appreciate the support on this. It's been a long time, not a long time for me, a month is a long time.
Any other discussion? I'd like to comment that the letters from the townships are with the resolution. We did receive them. Roll call vote, please.
Milburn.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Number 11, committee reports. Eric, do you have anything?
No, I have a committee meeting on Friday with the Northern Lakes Mental Health Association.
Eric?
District Health, basically, just washing your hands and trying not to get sick. I see a lot of folks are calling in sick, especially at the schools. And Airport was gonna be here today, Eric was gonna be here, but he had another commitment coming up, so. I don't want, I'm not gonna steal his thunder, he'll give a report in two weeks. That's all I have, thank you.
David?
Airport Committee, and Mr. Mark, Jody, and Michelle, thank you.
I have, I have a question about the Airport Committee. I know at one of our previous meetings, you were guys were gonna be discussing about raising the rates for the hangar, the hangar rates, because I, because I know that that's gonna be an issue coming up in our budget.
We need to talk about, we need to talk about that.
Okay.
We did talk about it.
Okay, okay, good.
Quite extensively. Because we'd like to possibly build more hangars if we need to. But I'll let Eric bring that up. Thanks for, thanks for your comment.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm on the Materials Management Committee. I reviewed a lot of information last week. I'm not sure that's the direction we want to go, to do our own plan, but we'll bring it forth to a work session at one point, discuss it further.
What are some of the ramifications, Rex? I know we've talked about it in private.
From what I've found, the funding is not guaranteed. Funding is based on allocation. If it's allocated by the state, then they'll pay it. It can change year to year.
What is meant by allocation?
They have to approve spending that money, just when.
State has to approve it, so they could force us to do this and then not approve paying us.
Well, it's not a force. It's if you want to sign up to do your own plan. And then I read one article by the lady that's in charge of this from Eagle, and she more or less indicated that year four and five is really iffy and nothing beyond that. Well, this is, from what I'm seeing, it's not funding the whole program forever. And also, I think we may expend more money than they're trying to bribe us with to draft our own plan. But, you know, we'll bring more information together in a work session, so the whole board can decide which way to go.
What, what is the downside and the upside of both of implementing our own plan and not implementing our own plan?
I haven't seen any upside.
So what are you, are you saying that you would recommend?
Here is my suspicion. State of Michigan wants you to sign on the dotted line so they have you by the tail. Other than that, they may not have no pull.
So you're not in favor of it?
I'm not in favor of it, but we'll bring all the information forth to a work session so the board as a whole can decide which way to go.
So we're gonna learn more?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other things?
No, it's amazing.
Any board comment? Public comment? Anybody on Zoom? I will know it. I didn't see anybody else in public.
There we go.
Eric, you? No, even though we may know who you are, you gotta state your name.
Green lights on.
Cool.
Rick Meeks, resident of the county. I wanted to talk about something we were talking about earlier today, it's about the wake bolt problems. They are incredibly destructive. But I think, real quickly, to put things in kind of historical perspective, we at one time had conservation of state, boy, conservation officers that controlled the lakes of Michigan. Yeah, that was 40 years ago or so, but they don't do it anymore. They quit the, they stopped the program, but we gave the money to the county so that you guys can start doing it. But how much of that money do we see these days? It can't dwindle away. The laws are still there, but there's no money coming from the state for enforcement. That's the problem that we have constantly from the state. They make a lot of money off in these lakes, but they don't do anything to enforce it. You've got a problem with nauseous weeds and invasive species, invasive species of weeds that are getting into our lakes. And what's they do? We pass a law that says you can't bike down the road with those weeds hanging off in your trailer. Charlie and I are part of a group of people that meet with the state, represent the state twice a year to talk about problems like this. We say, we can go down there and watch it, and at the ramps, you see these bolts backing into the lake with stuff hanging off of them, and the DNR employees are hanging around doing nothing. They will not enforce it. Well, we can't. It takes a conservation officer. Well, okay, then put some conservation officer. We don't have any funding for this, to spend that. Don't fall for it. Just passing the law. Force them, talk to them, say, retire, are you making us try and do these things? Like, release the wake bolts without any money come in. Give us some money, so there's an opportunity to put some pressure on us. And without it, ask the law. We took care of the problem. No, you didn't. Please don't let them get away with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a Carrie Milburn.
Hello, I just wanted to make a comment. I had called the Commissioner's secretary this morning hoping to get the link for the lake level structure Zoom meeting and was told she didn't think it was Zoomed. So I'm hoping in the future that you're able to Zoom those meetings.
It's Zoomed. Yeah, it'll be on Zoom.
It'll be on Zoom.
It's the same link as the regular meeting.
Okay, well, she was unaware, so maybe share info.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Anybody else in the audience? Thank you.
Jody has a comment.
You have something to say?
I do.
Go ahead.
It's actually nice, too.
Do it under the name of Jody.
I will. Jody Valentino, Garrish Township resident. So I just wanted to piggyback on Commissioner Ostergren and what he is attempting to do with bringing in this, this solar farm field to this specific area back here off of Higgins, kind of Fireman's Memorial-ish area. But a little further back, just so people don't get confused, when we say airport, there is actually a literal airport back there as well. Not everybody knows. And some of the things with, with education in looking at what they've done with that Groveland, Groveland Mine Solar Farm, they've actually done several partnerships with the local schools as well. So education and training in those areas partnering to create some further, like CET type of programs for hands-on technology. So training people to move towards solar power as careers. Additionally, they have a solar scholarship that they have created for graduates of the local high schools up there, which is $5,000 a year. So they have created, this company has created a scholarship fund specific for those areas. They also offer recreation grants to the local townships. So not only are they increasing the footprint as far as bringing in tax dollars, but they are trying to be a good partner with the school districts, the townships, and the county up there as well. I think it's a pretty good company. I know a year and a half ago, I, you know, when you brought it up to me, I liked the idea, and I like the idea even better. I know people don't want to see a Target, they don't want to see some, you know, big box stores or anything in this area. But we are a green county, and I commend you for continuing on this effort.
Thank you. It takes, it always takes a champion of a project to make things push through because things can get dropped so often.
Would you like to make a comment on that subject, please? You contact these people, Eric, and see if there's something the board can do to encourage this to move forward?
Absolutely. I'm in communication with them all the time, so.
Thank you. No other public comment? Then on Zoom, I take a motion to adjourn? I'll say aye?
Aye.
We'll resume it. Do you leave this pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, board members, please.
Answer. Milburn.
Here.
Wolfson.
Here.
Ostergren.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Is there any additions or deletions of the agenda? I'd like to add that some words, we're gonna talk, have a discussion about the asking for seasonal variance on the lake level of Houghton Lake. I'd like to add that some words, we're going to talk, have a discussion about the asking for a seasonal variance on the lake level of Houghton Lake. And I think we'll save that for number, we'll put it right after number nine. That way Chase will wait to address some issues on it and then has an update. Any discussion on that part? Yes.
Is that fit within the parameters of our, is that fit within the parameters of the Volkaniz Act? I want to make sure that is the public aware that we're going to do that?
We are not doing a resolution today. We're just discussing.
Yeah, we're just discovering. I just want to be understood it wasn't on the agenda before.
No, it was not. Unless it was included in the delegatory update.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
One second. Discussion?
Okay.
You're good? We can change it.
Okay.
I would just, I did not get a copy of this agenda. I got a copy of all the other agendas. I didn't get a copy of this special.
Share with Eric.
Would have been there, I would have gone to get our Michelle project.
Just probably test the bottom.
Sixty days. She told me she has retirement brain going on, just so you know.
What's that? We got too many meetings?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Astor.
Here, yes.
Milburn.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Carrie.
Public comment? Is anybody in the public have a comment?
I tried to get my hearing aids working before I came.
Come up to the tables.
I do my very best to follow.
You got to go up to the table and introduce yourself.
I'd like to hear it. He got.
All right.
Anybody else have a problem?
Okay, we'll, we'll lean into the mic.
We have incredibly horrible sound system. These guys are all soft spoken.
We'll, we'll, we'll do our best, sir.
I, I'm soft spoken? That's the first I've ever heard that. First I've ever heard that.
Any other public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay.
Good morning. Let's say hello to all commissioners.
Morning, Judge.
Everybody that's here. I represent a group of low-lying landowners within the county of Roscommon Denton Township, Markey Township and Roscommon Township. We have suffered under this person's handling of the dam. We have now had the logs that I wasn't even aware existed, which show that this county banked water when we were flooding. We now have the data to show that this county through that man right there, Mr. Russo, lied to the public and said, when, when, when this person's got water running in his front door and out of his back door, and this person has a seawall coming out. And I have the loss of 38 to 68 acres, use of 38 to 68 acres in my 168 acres. And I have water standing in my yard within six feet of my pump. But oh, that's just Mother Nature. It's not Mother Nature. It's this man here at the direction of this board. Either he was at the direction of this board or he was acting without. Either way, he is in violation of the law. He has caused damage. The statute says that if a delegate, a delegated agent has to seek to get to lake level. There's a, a court of appeals case that says, recent court of appeals case that says reaching the designated lake level should be a daily goal. You don't get to do what you're proposing here. You don't get to do that. Not when you, we can't trust you. The other thing is, is I was asking about some discrepancies with the present delegated authority. And your records are false. They're false because when you say that Bay one, Bay three or Bay two and Bay six, which are the ones with the? One, three, six. When you say that they are fully open, they aren't. And they have been open how many years? Fourteen years, Mr. Russo? Since that, those boards have been removed? Those bottom boards?
This is not.
We can't discuss.
You can't discuss. My, my, my guess, it's been 14 years, but you cannot have no, not known that. Okay? So this year is the best we've had, but we still, you have not met legal level during the winter months. Why? Because you had a steel plate illegally set and you had permanent obstructions. And the reports say one of six is in, but there's three of six in, or five of six in. And you can ask your delegated authority, because when I pointed out that the discrepancies, it looked like he was putting boards in. He says, no. Those boards were already in there. And they, they're blocked by stone, mud, debris, and they haven't been moved in years. Somebody on this board had to know. Mr. Milburn, if you didn't know, you didn't do your duty. You knew. You made public statements in this board, in this board, at the Lake Association and at the improvement board saying that you knew it was against the law and you were banking water. We suffered. Under this code, we have the authority to do it. This board is liable because you didn't have a delegated authority. But you all knew, not you, and not you, you weren't on the board. But the board knew or had to know. And you are now talking about propagating this proposal is an attempt, and he's mal, uh, mal, he's bad-mouthing me. He's having, telling people to call and try to get, I'm done. We, this is a notice to you. You will receive notice from council that we are going to seek legal action against the board, against the county, and against him individually. Because if he was not a delegated authority, and I don't believe there was any delegated authority, if I read the minutes right before the improvement board.
Sure, your time is up. Thank you.
You have to go up here and state your name.
My time started. You gotta, you gotta stop.
Are you ready?
How long do I get?
Five minutes.
Oh, five.
We're five steps, whichever square.
Craig Cotterman, uh, 413, 411 Old Trail Drive. The reason I ask is the last time I got thrown out of the improvement board meeting. I don't know. I just want to say, uh, my father spoke to county commissioners, it must have been 30 years ago, about damage to our shoreline, damage to our property. It was a public meeting. He, he wrote out three pages. You know, all this detailed stuff. Of course, he said then he didn't trust you. And I'm saying, Dad. But he was against you folks banking water back then. Of course, everybody else, the audience, they booed him. I'm pretty sure if there are some high-water advocates here, they would have been booing Mike, and I'm pretty sure they'd be booing me. This lake level issue is a political issue. You're trying to get votes. There's not one shred of environmental fact that would support a lake level increase. This is a pure voting issue. And again, I'd like to keep repeating this. I don't trust any of you. You intend to bank water? Your intent is to damage my home and property? Your intent is to damage what little bit of wild rice we have in Houghton Lake? Or three or four wild rice surveys, most point out that it's a protected species under Michigan law, number one. Next thing they point out that any, any increase in water level is detrimental to the wild rice. And if there's any restoration efforts, we need a legal lake level. My life at this lake, my inspiration has always come from the hunting, the fishing, bird watching. This is who I am. You folks are taking this life away from me. You don't get it, but I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Anyone on Zoom? Number six, Higgins Lake, my delegated authority update?
All right, so I don't think I have any really good news about Higgins Lake. As of yesterday, it's about two and a half inches below legal lake level, summer legal lake level. I, there was talk of a permit. I did some feeling out with Eagle. I don't, one could still be sent, but I don't think anything's going to come from it to try to retain any more water. Still talking to Hi-Fi about some lake, uh, stream gauging. And at that point, that is it for Higgins Lake. I guess, are there any questions on Higgins Lake?
Yeah, what about restoring it to the original condition that it was back in 2007 when the permit was put in?
I don't make those decisions. That's.
How, how can they say that? I mean, how can they discourage you? I, I would suggest that.
I mean, I could, I can still file. I was just.
I think we should file because then, once we file for a permit change, that takes the burden off this commission on maintaining the legal levels. I advised this commission years ago, ask Eagle for a permit change.
This.
So you're asking for your permit change instead of just filing for like a, a maintenance or alteration permit?
Well, it's the same thing. You're telling me it's the same thing. I, I, I advised this commission years ago to do that. This commission never would have been sued. It would have been Eagle that would have been sued. That's who needs to be sued. They're the ones, they're the bad boys in this. And they're the ones that are neglecting. They don't care. They don't. We need to ask for a permit change on Higgins Lake. We need to do it immediately.
Well, we had talked about asking for a permit to restore the stream bed to its level.
Yes, that would be fine.
Yeah, that's based on the survey. Yes.
And as far as I know, this board still feels we should move in that direction? Is there any, I'm going to, from other.
What do we, what do we have to do to do that, Rex?
It'll be done by Monday.
I'm going to make a really strong suggestion for you and for this board, having been here for 10 years and sat through all of the things that have gone on. I really think that this board needs to pass a motion authorizing the delegated authority to do that in his duties. A, that gives you protection as a delegated authority. And B, that shows that you are united in this. And I think that makes a difference when you're, when you're going to apply for a permit with Eagle. Plus, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Astor, and that's twice today. And I'm going to say you definitely should do this, so.
When can we make that motion? Can we make it right at this point, or does that come down to?
We could, but I'd like to have the other board members agree to.
You gotta, you gotta wait at least until, I would say the earliest would be after it's discussed next meeting and then the following meeting. It has to be vetted to the public. You can't throw a motion together. So it has to be on the agenda for the next meeting to talk about, then bring it forward to a motion.
We will have to do that in our regular meeting then because this.
We can have a special meeting after the regular meeting.
We can't do it. We can't do it next meeting. We can't obviously.
Discuss it.
Totally against the law.
Well, I think we have to have a special meetings on this because time is of the essence right now. It's springtime. Water's level's already below the legal level on Higgins Lake.
A melt.
And no snow melt. I mean, we're going to have a disaster on this lake this.
Let's bring it to the next work session. You can draft the permit. And then we can look at the permit, how it's going to be presented.
Mr. Chair, can we, can we, can we set up a special meeting?
Yes, I'm still working on that here.
Well.
I'm still working on that. I haven't finished yet.
Okay.
We bring it up in the work session.
Two weeks.
In two weeks. That gives us time to all have input on it. And we can move forward with the same meeting, you know, the next, the agenda meeting, to have it on the agenda for approval or not by the board.
I would propose that we have.
But we must go through, through a workshop to, so everybody has input on it. And make sure this, yep, this is drafted the way we expect and so forth.
We're required to provide 18 hours' notice for a special meeting. I, I propose that we.
We'll put it right on the agenda, right? When we do the agenda.
We can, we can make. Am I right on that, Jody?
Yeah, but the chair is going to be gone. Right, but in two weeks, I would say.
In two weeks, we'll, we'll put it on the agenda and the work session meeting.
I'm asking a process question of our, uh, yeah, there's a technical word. I'm trying to remember the names.
You're calling me the parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian, there we go. I'm calling you the parliamentarian again. How can we do this to speed it up is what I'm, is all I'm asking the parliamentarian.
That's completely at the board's discretion if they choose to do a special meeting. That's one thing, but as the chair is suggesting, they'll put it on the work session at the next meeting, but also have motion available in the regular meeting so that both processes would take place at the next.
The same times, the same meeting.
Same day.
Oh, I've heard.
Different meeting, same day.
The kicker is you could have a special board. I think, I think I see where Eric's trying to go. Looking to try to speed up the process, but at the same time, keep the public informed.
Yes.
You could, you could, and I'll use the word could, have a meeting in, let's say, the next seven or eight to 10 days. And put it for a discussion purpose only, and then you could put it on the motion for two weeks from today.
Or they're saying we could do it all in the same day?
Yeah.
I wouldn't recommend that. Part of mine is a bad idea. The reason being is the public's not vetted.
No, they will, they will be, though.
I would, I would never do that. It should be a special board meeting should be pertinent to one item only.
I'll do whatever we can get passed.
So in other words, my recommendation would be for consideration, consideration of the meeting.
Yeah. Well, what I think you're saying is, and Darlene brought this up several times, is when the public gives you information, sometimes it's good to let it stew.
Right.
And think about what was brought up before making a decision, instead of just hearing the public, then making a decision right then and there.
It's imperative that we get public input. We just, and if we're going to have a special board meeting, we have to have one item only. What you do is have it in about a week or so, week or so from now on, notify the, notify the newspapers so that they can put it in the paper. Let the public know on the internet. And then from there on, then you could have your meeting four or five days later.
Thank you, Mark. I, I go for that 100%.
That's a suggestion. I'm not saying that's what you.
So you're suggesting a workshop meeting, with seven days or so.
It needs to be done.
Is the rest of the board in agreement with that?
We get the time and date, but it should be at least seven to 10 days from now.
I'd be, I'd be fine with that also. I, I like that idea.
Just a suggestion.
When will Darlene be back?
I think in another week.
So we can make.
I think she'll be back next week.
We, we can make it for the day she gets back. She'll love that. At least a day or two after.
Okay, I'm flexible on that.
Yeah, I already, I already have. I can tell you exactly what, what, what was entailed in that.
So you would be able to send it out to the board of commissioners. We can post it with the special meeting that you'll schedule at some point.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have like the whole permit drafted, but.
Enough that the public would have information.
Enough information.
Enough that the public would know exactly what was proposed. Correct.
And I, my, my, my thoughts are just from the hip here. You either have it on a Friday or a Monday, 10:00 in the morning, so the public can be aware of it. Apers can be cognizant of the fact that it's going to be posted, the fact that we can discuss it and give public input from the folks that are here. And that's just my suggestion.
I, I like your, I like Mark's suggestion.
David?
I would like to suggest we have a special board meeting on Monday, the 25th, and then we could vote on it on the 28th at a regular meeting.
Does that work for the other board members?
For me.
10 a.m.
Hold on, hold on, just a second. Let me double check. That will work very well for my schedule.
Hey, let's schedule it for them. It should be a short meeting.
And I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that we put up some kind of notice out to the public that this meeting's going to occur.
You available for Zoom, Andy?
I'm in the middle.
Oh, Andy, behind you.
You're a Zoom expert.
He's right behind you.
All right, so that's settled.
What is the specific purpose of the meeting?
It is to discuss a permit for putting storms back in Higgins Lake's stream bed.
I, I would, I would say, I would say. I would say alterations to the Higgins Lake level control structure, permit for alterations to the Higgins Lake level control structure.
Okay.
Are you going to be available on the 25th? We should ask.
You guys own me, I'm. Whenever you need me, I'll be available.
Are we done with Higgins Lake now?
Yes.
Let's move on to St. Helen, Holton Lake.
All right, Holton Lake, as of yesterday, we were one inch over legal lake level. That is with two, um, gates in and through four gates out. The plate was removed yesterday.
Seal plate?
Seal plate was removed yesterday. Got, uh, free drone footage for that, so that'll get sent out to everyone who wants it. That's pretty cool.
Are the temporary boards behind, working?
Right. Yep, those are working great. Those won't go anywhere.
Summer level one inch over legal.
One inch over legal summer level, correct. Um, let me go to my notes here. Um, you guys, I guess, have the petition or resolution, right? Is that what? All the, I don't have a copy of it, so. That's what all the, um, I guess that's about. So as you know, there are, as Baumgardner brought up, there are people that want it kept the way it is, and then there are people that want it higher. So there's, there's two stories, there's two sides to every story. Um, what we did have in March, which was really unique for this March, because usually there's ice on, on the lake, is we had two seep events in March. Now, if you guys don't know what that is, that's where the wind will blow hard enough that it actually raises one side of the lake and lowers the other side. So we had two of those events. And our gauge is in the West Bay. Though we don't have a gauge in the East Bay. Um, Hi-Fi will be installing that relatively soon here. I don't have a timeline on them, but that's where the West Bay will drop, in those two events, drop five, about five inches, maybe six, and then the east side will go up five or six inches. So, um, during that event this past, I think it was Tuesday, you could actually see water coming up the Meskeen River, because it was, it was blowing so hard out of, out of the west. Um, so those are things to keep in mind, keep in mind when you, when you talk about raising um, a lake level, is you have events like this that are unpredictable, that can alter lake levels on whatever side of the lake the wind is blowing. Whether raising or lowering. So. I think that is it on Holton Lake. Did you guys have any questions? Oh, and I'll be giving you an updated schedule on the SAD here like within the next couple of days.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Okay. Holton Lake, uh, you're asking, uh, after reviewing the historical court order relating to Holton Lake's normal levels found that updates are necessary to be consistent with state law to ensure that the court order authorized seasonal operational adjustments. What is meant by that?
I am not asking anything. What I did was I brought concerns of the public
Right.
to do the SAD team and what was happening, what's going on, and the, the concerns of the public, there's, there's always two concerns. I am low, it seems like, but the concerns were, it wouldn't be high enough and that the problem wouldn't be so much now, would it be in August, September? When you're one to three inches old, I think last year, don't quote me on this, but last year, the lake was one to three inches below legal lake level in August. So the idea is to to retain a little bit so that when you get there, the, that four inches, then when you hit August, September, you're at legal lake level instead of below.
It would be a board decision.
Yeah, that's, that's all you guys, this is me just.
You just bringing this information.
Bringing this information to you.
I'm sure this board has forgotten. There's a resolution passed in 2019. They said you guys weren't to do anything. Lake level control structures or any modifications of the lake, you're going to have to, you're going to have to uh, dissolve that, that resolution or uh, I forget what the technical word is. But you're going to have to get rid of that resolution.
Would that, would that account for the permit on Higgins?
Uh, no.
Going lake levels, not lake level control structures?
That, that, that wouldn't have anything to do with Higgins. This is, this is what you're, what this resolution is saying is you're going to start modifying.
And see, we'll have to review that resolution and see if it applies to all lakes or just.
Oh, it did. It was off, all three lakes. Is, isn't that correct, Jody?
You really want me to answer? No, you are not correct. Um, so that resolution is specific to the public coming to the Board of Commissioners. It is a draft very similar to, um, the Drain Commissioner Resolution that was passed, I think a year or two before that, where it basically said that if the public wanted to bring a project forward, that they would have to have two thirds of the vested interested parties in there. Um, I would hesitate to say that it wouldn't apply to anything that would change a legal level. Um, but not having the resolution in front of me, I think that, um, current chairperson Wilson is correct that you guys would want to review that and make your decision amongst yourselves. Clearly, I'm not an attorney, so.
Right, but I believe earlier this year, we said we weren't going to be doing anything. Uh, this year or last year, I'm, I'm sorry, 2023.
We made a public comment that we had no interest in raising the lake level of Higgins Lake.
No, of all the lakes, applied to all the lakes.
I, I think that only applied to Higgins Lake, if memory serves me right, but we can review that.
No, I, I, I can guarantee, I know this, it applies to all three of our lakes. Guarantee it.
Well, like I said, we can review it. Then this board can decide whether they want to move forward. I'm asking for, uh.
Have to repeal that.
Of variance on warmer levels of Holton Lake. That's Mark.
All three.
Yeah.
Best, best I can remember is all three.
Okay, well, we'll review it.
I would like to wait till we have a full board.
Correct.
Hold on, I want to. Before we go any further, what did you say, Mark? He said I was right.
That was the first time I've ever said that.
He, he believes it applied to all three, he believes it applied to all three lakes.
I have to be excused.
It wasn't a resolution, it was a, uh, yeah, it was, I, I will, after the meeting, I'll pull it up and I'll try to find, it'll take me, take me a couple minutes.
Um, I don't, I don't believe we had a resolution on that.
No, it wasn't a resolution, it was.
So I'm going to leave it to you to explore the library there and find that in the meetings and get, gather that information for us. Lake St. Helen.
Okay.
Simple one.
Um, it is, uh, two and a, two quarter inches. Two and a quarter inches over, um, summer legal lake level. On Saturday, I went and removed two boards and it continued to climb. And so this morning, another four boards were removed. Try to bring it down to legal lake level, we'll see what happens. Still trying to learn.
How fast it gets.
How fast it goes up and down for each lake, so, um, I should have it within probably a couple of weeks to a month, I figured out, but, uh, um, as for St. Helen, um, the SAD will starting, looking into that and working on that, will be starting beginning of next week on Tuesday. Are there any questions on that?
Um, why don't you stay there, Chase, because we're going to talk about number nine, unfinished business, the Hi-Fi monitoring.
I met him, uh, Nick was out there at Holton Lake yesterday, talked to him, he installed age at Holton Lake, and he said he was going to Higgins next and then St. Helen.
We're going to put two on Higgins?
The, the thought is to put two on Higgins and two on, um, Holton Lake. And the idea behind that is to see the seep events, to see how extreme those events are. What is still to be determined are, where are the best locations to determine that?
David?
Holton Lake, where do that, where are they put in the first cage? Same area as the last one.
On Holton Lake?
Yeah.
So right when you come up to the structure on the right, right off there out in front, it's right there. It's mounted right to the, the concrete wall right there.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? I do.
Yeah.
When do we tell them how we want this put on our website or whatever, so that we can get the information to the public?
Uh, that's a good question. I will ask that question. What, what I think they're going to want to do is they're going to want a week or two to take their data and compare it to U S C, USGS data and kind of see how they're riding, just to confirm before they start putting it public, but I can ask that question.
This is set up.
Oh, go ahead.
This is set up so that public can have something sent to them.
Correct. Yeah, so the way I want to set it up is we can do text updates, and then I want it to be at a more accessible um, location, and I also would like it to be easier to work through all the ins and outs. And then we can, what I hope, once we start getting data, I'd like the public to visit it and say, hey, could you include this? Could you get rid of this? So that it's easiest for the public to click on and know exactly what's going on. Don't have all these extra.
Steps to go through.
Steps to go through.
Well, in other words, if someone has it set up, they can get it set up possibly where they want to know what the lake level on Holton Lake was yesterday, you'll tell them how many inches above or below.
Right, yeah, we're going to do it in inches because we're going to do it in inches because people have a hard time with engineering role, so.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
David?
Uh, first, I received an email yesterday, uh, can we put into that new one's done, the old one back up for the lake levels for the time being?
The USGS?
Yeah.
It expires this month.
Okay.
Yep.
But into he read.
No, when it expires, expires, we don't renew for a year.
Oh, I'm saying that, but in two of the expires, can we put it back up?
Oh, it was never taken down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so both are running at the same time right now.
Oh, okay.
The idea behind that is so that you can correlate, to make sure things are running right.
Okay, yeah, he said for some reason he couldn't find the lake levels, it was taken down the way we used to do it or something like that.
That might be the email, that might be the county website.
It's on the county website, you're correct.
Yes, that might be the county website.
Can we go back to the old way? I guess it's real confusing or whatever is up there.
I, I don't.
I'll check with Jody on that.
Yeah, we have a Jody question. If he has questions, though, he can give me a call or shoot me an email and I can.
Sounds good.
It'll be better to go to his, Mark?
My son was here to be able to ask this question better than me. But how many platforms can we, can we utilize? It's just not use text, the more platforms, the better.
So the one thing, the wonderful thing about this company is they're a startup. They're big enough to where they can do, kind of, they have enough staff, they can do whatever you want.
Redundancy is the key, my, for more I said.
So.
Email, text, whatever you got.
They, they've talked anything from text, email, website, to an app on your phone. Whatever, whatever the county wants.
More platforms, the better. Redundancy is the key. From where I sit.
Yes, David.
I'd just like to thank Chase. I went to the control structure yesterday and Chase was there in the water uh, fixing the boards and stuff, and I just appreciate, I stopped by his house at seven o'clock in the morning, talked to him. Didn't throw nothing at me, but I appreciate what he's doing. And you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to write down, Mark, go ahead, go ahead.
Good.
I'd like to write down what David said. Uh, Chase's job is getting to be really crazy. All the people calling because what is the lake level, why is it low, and whatever. I think we need to put in the paper something explaining why the lake levels are where they're at and why you may not be re-used to seeing them at that, but we must maintain the legal level. And hopefully that'll help him in his job, so. I think we need to make public awareness of why it is what it is. Is that agreeable with anybody? Agreeable?
Sure.
Okay. Mark?
Should bring it forward to the, to the board to review before we.
Correct.
Yeah.
It'd be, sorry, Judge. You should bring it to the board because when you write that letter and list, list your names.
It's coming from the board.
Entire board.
Correct.
So my recommendation would be to bring it on the 25th.
Okay.
So. In our special meeting.
In our special meeting for clarity and for input, not only from us, but from the public. It's imperative that the public also has an input, there may be, there may be something from the public that would, would assist in the article that would add intimacy.
Sounds good.
I wouldn't, I would hesitate to put out an article that wasn't well-vetted.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else for me, or?
I guess you can go home now. I don't think we have any motions or resolutions on this. Um, we have public comment?
I get two.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Can I ask him a question?
No.
No.
Can I ask you a question?
No.
You could, you could make a public comment, and if I feel it needs to be addressed at this time, I have the authority to address it.
Well, thank you. Do I have to give my name again?
Yeah.
Same, it's the same as it was before. Brett Cotterman, uh, 413 Old Trail Drive. He was explaining, uh, see, I hear this echo all the time. I, and, uh, it's driving me.
Yeah, it usually isn't like that, I'm.
It's driving me. This is just an outrage. You're deciding the fate of my property. The my property isn't going to be worth anything when you guys get done with it. It's already in the flood plain. I was talking to my neighbor Dave. Average, average lake level in the spring is 11 inches if you go through the USGS thing. Average, uh, you know, springtime, 11 inches. Your rest, your.
Division to what?
11 inches is above the legal summer level. 11 inches is higher than it's supposed to be in the spring. Add your four inches to that, Dave did the math, he said I'm now at 15 inches. Is that right? Now, if you add the wind-driven tides on top of that, I got another six inches. So I got 15, 21 inches. Uh, flood plain elevation for my property and everyone else is on the lake is 18 inches above legal summer level. You don't know what it's like to be there when this event happens. I do. The waves come over the seawall, flood my crawl space, they run all the way up to the edge of the road. This happens. And as far as these wind-driven tides, uh, your, your gauge is probably a half, three quarters of a mile uh, from the mouth of the, you know, the outlet of Holton Lake. That's not an accurate reading on what's going on in the lake. Uh, I believe the one wild rice survey, uh, written by Martz and Eustaback, said that East Bay would be, have a far greater fetch than what the gauge is now reporting. If you're getting five inches at the gauge, that's a three quarters of a mile from the mouth of the, uh, Holton Lake, or from the outlet of Holton Lake, in East Bay, I'm getting 10 inches. It's far more, it's, it's much more, it's much higher in front of my house than it is at the reporting gauge. I just can't put it into words, what you're doing to the shoreline. I believe the last figure I heard, it was 85% bulk-headed. These bulkheads are there because it's flood protection. There's people in my neighborhood that would love to take their seawalls out. Uh, there's people in my neighborhood that would love to take their seawalls out. I'm one of them. My neighbor Mark Weber is another one. We've expressed desires to go with a natural shoreline. It would be impossible to have a natural shoreline in Holton Lake if you guys are banking water and not, not striving to achieve a natural lake level or a legal lake level. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mike Baumgartner, uh, I just would like you to recall Chase and ask him about my statement that their three bays are blocked and it's been permanent and how, how you, how he would suggest adjusting it. Can we do that? I don't really want to, but, because, because I, I mean, in my presentation, I, I made the point that there are obstructions that don't show on your statistics. And, and so, that's a question I'd like this board to address, and he's here. Isn't he your expert?
Thank you.
I would, I would support that, Max.
Um, Chase, would you like to recap on Holton Lake's update? So, everybody knows.
It's just a lot of, it's a lot of stuff to keep straight. So, um, back in January, there was supposed to be a large rain event, and I went out on the old county logs. It said there were, I think, three, don't quote me, three boards in, in the center bay. So, I went out and I was like, okay, I'm gonna remove those to try to get as much flow, because the plate's in, and there was a big rain event supposed to be coming in. That was back in January when everything melted and it was raining. It didn't rain, um, but when I was out there, I did remove the two boards, and I found there were extra boards in there that I was not aware of. And that is what, um, Mr. Baumgartner is talking about, is in the first bay. So, if you go, if you're looking at the face of the structure, working left to right, in the first bay, below the gate, there are two additional boards down there, um, that, when you, when you say you have 100% flow, you, you don't, because there's still two boards in there. And then the next bay is completely clear. The center bay, there were, there's, um, after removing two boards, there's still two more in there. Those were lodged. I was unable to get those moved. It was January, give me, so it was a little cold. Um, and then on bay six, there are another two boards below the gate. That's the far bay. So, this is what he's, he's talking about, how saying that, um, all the water that could be going through that structure is not, all the possible flow that you could be putting through that structure is not being allowed because of these obstructions.
You feel it's necessary to make them boards movable?
It would, it would be good to make them movable in case there was a problem, because in case you get, let's say you get a 200-year rain event and you need all your water to get downstream as much as possible, you, you still have, you still have six boards stuck in there. Six boards on Higgins Lake is huge. Six boards would make and break Higgins Lake. I know Holton Lake has more flow, but still, six boards is a lot of flow. So, six boards would be an entire bay.
I think you, as a delegated authority, has authority to make them operational if you feel they're needed.
Would you need to get a permit for that?
I would assume that would be under maintenance.
It's just boards in, boards out.
Okay, I would assume that would be under maintenance, but you would still want to make Eagle happy and put out Tredvady curtain and do, make it look all pretty for them.
And those were the two boards that you put in to fix?
No, no, these are other boards. These are, these are boards on the bottom down low.
And they're not, they're not the boards in five and six that the steel plate?
No.
Behind the steel plate?
Those boards go up and down, no problem.
Or you can get those boards up and down, okay?
Yeah, 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 I got a crank system. You just go there and one person can do it.
Mark?
I mean, it's, it's not, it's not, again, it's not a modification, it's just, it's pulling, it's, it's essentially their, their lodge boards down low in the water, pulling those that, that have been left in there, you know? Okay, but again, it, it, it should, it, let's say, it doesn't rain for the rest of the year, and you need to retain every drop of water. Removing those will not affect that. You will still be able to retain every drop of water. Okay.
The permits only need to?
I, you shouldn't need a permit for general maintenance.
Only if it's a bunch of sediment build-up in front of them, is it what you're saying?
Well, there is sediment build-up in front of them, but you still shouldn't need, as soon as you remove the boards, that sediment build-up
It's gone.
is gone, and that's what the Tredvady curtain downstream would, would catch that.
I would also suggest.
What am I, notice?
All right.
That's your decision.
I, I can, I can send an email to DM Safety.
I would.
Yeah. Yeah, because, I mean, when the two new gates were added that were behind the, the steel plate, there was no permit needed for those.
I just assume that we have those operational, because I can defend not enough water, because it didn't rain, but I cannot defend flooding somebody, because we didn't have the boards operational.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'll touch base with DM Safety. Yep.
Thank you. Not really. After the meeting. We have anybody on Zoom for public comment? Is it Carrie? You want to state your name? Make sure the green light's on.
Hi, Carrie Milburn, Russ Common Township, and I just wanted to come, um, and talk about Chase, who was wonderful and came and met with Diane and I at our offices, um, and answered some questions we had, but also, um, caused us to question a couple more things. Um, so, we're still curious if townships are going to get charged for road ends. And when he was there, he brought up that townships maybe charged a percentage of the project, and we hadn't heard anything about that prior to that meeting. So, just maybe better communication regarding, um, how things are gonna get handled, um, and we'd appreciate, you know, letting us know if that's gonna be the case.
Thank you. We have to speak with you after the meeting about that.
I'd like to comment on that, please. Would you like me to address that with Diane Randall?
If you want to address it right now, I guess we.
Mark, go ahead.
I was just given public comment. I didn't know.
My sole is here to the statutes of the law always. Work with the framework of the law to ensure that the perceived inequities of special assessments, lake level control structures are minimized, and Carrie, I'll give you a copy. It is paramount that we adequately and consistently represent our constituents the best of our capabilities. Therefore, the factors related to the road ends of the special assessment districts have been made excessively minimize costs to our townships and the people we represent. I don't know if that's gonna answer your question, but it's something that at least you walk, you can walk out here with something in your hand.
Can I speak to that since you love?
Go ahead.
What's gonna happen is the road ends are going to be assessed by the township. All the township deals with that is up to them. In other words, the only way that they can assess.
Excuse me, the road ends are not gonna be assessed.
That's, that's not what I understand. The road it sends are gonna be part of the special assessment district. Yes, they are.
I mean, it's, there needs to be a little more discussions.
Carrie, if you stick around, I'll give you a, a copy of how this, how this is assessed. Nothing, okay. Any other public comment? No, I don't think so. He can make a public comment, but he cannot assign them to you. No, no. Unless, unless he's, cannot speak. Okay. I take a motion for adjournment?
Move this, yeah. Second.
Second, thank you.